Page now five.
Okay. Get it.
Would you please just hear the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mrs. Grimm. Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Item three, adoption of minutes.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mrs. Grimm's absent. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item four, any agenda additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yeah, put in your one addition, we have to item, add an item, and go into executive session to consider the discipline of a public employee, and then we'll move to adjourn. With no action taken, I have to say it goes.
Reception of visitors slash correspondence?
So I have three thank you cards to pass around from some staff members at the high school, if that is necessary, to thank you for the meat and cheese tray for staff appreciation week, teacher appreciation day. And we do have a visitor with us today, and that is Reno Comatelli from the OSBA.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Reno Capor from the House School Board Association, Northeast Regional Manager, and it's part of my duties is to make sure that you're getting all the services that you need. And the other thing I do is I go into the community and I give out, region give out awards. Some of that paper I put on here is mine. The blue paper just kind of goes over the regional governance, which is basically, we're 19 counties, 225 schools, so we are the largest region out of the House School Board Association. You have two good school board members nearby that represent Columbia County, Tom Brophy Wellsville, and Larry Walton over in East Liverpool. So if you ever need anything or bad, they're too good contact. The other piece of paper is that we do a fundraiser every year for, we give out a scholarship every year to a deserving senior who wants to go into education. Matter of fact, the deadline is May 15th, and I think I've done scholarships from some from one-year high schools in the past couple of years. We do a fundraiser every year at the Lake County Captain's Game, which is July 8th. If you're interested in going to the ballgame, if you're gonna need tickets, just get ahold of me, Tom, or Larry, because I got, we sell tickets in the area. This year at our spring conference, we gave out Years of Service Award, and a couple of your board members that missed it are missing the last couple of years. We start at 10 years. We figure if you're a board member, you've gone 10 years, that's pretty good. That means you've been elected a couple of times, re-elected a few times. You love the job, the community still loves you, and we like to recognize those board members of 10. Well, Mr. Smith, you've done 15, and I know you've missed your spring award the last couple of years, so let me, so we've got a little sum for you, you've been on the wall for 15 years of service, we thank you, and hopefully I'm back here one day for 20.
We'll see.
So congratulations. And then, boy, I love your name, because I'm Italian too. Mr. Burketti?
Burketti.
Burketti, yeah. I should know that the T's I changed. I think I met you at the, I met you at the JVS the one year for the 20, so I came out here, just wanted to re-award you for the 20-year award and say thank you again. Because we know, well, I always know the spring conference is tough to get through, but thank you on probably having over 20 years now. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And then this year, the main reason I came out here is that at the spring conference this year, your board president, Mr. Gallo, you missed, you missed out, and we understand the pretty drive out to North Olmsted. But we got you a nice little plaque that says 20 on it, and then a nice little certificate thanking you for 20 years. We figured if you've gone 20 years, both of you, that's pretty incredible. There's 35, about 3,500 board members in Ohio, most will not run for, half of them will not run for election after their first term, so they'll do 20. Hopefully I'm back here for, at 25. By 25, we'll recognize you at Capitol Conference. I did have someone from Austin Town do 50. So that is a good, that is a good goal to shoot for.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. And then these are some of the programs that if you missed them this year, for the awards there, on there, so there. And then I'm gonna leave you with just one of that. Any of you guys that are interested in getting involved in the region, let me know. We're always looking for people to be on our executive committee. And I'm not sure how much longer Larry and Tom are gonna be board members, so if you've got somebody on your board that wants to be involved in that leadership, that's a nice time. Next year, our spring conference will be in Parma, but I am working on bringing a spring conference out to this area. I'm going to the Tremble County Career Center after this, and I think we're gonna try and host a second spring conference in the Tremble County, Mahoney County area, so it makes it a little bit easier for you guys in this, my student, I call it my Steubenville area, my Ohio River area, to drive. So thank you for having us. If you need something, OSBH is a phone call, or if you need the services, whatever, we can do for you, okay? So thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, for having me out today.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it. Glad to see you again.
Yeah. Stop, um, Capitol board members who reach that, reach those levels. And then orange, and then orange piece of paper is an awards program for a fall conference. Have you guys stopped that outstanding person, your dish shirt, like a voluntary miss shirt? Not me, not me. We'd like to, we'd like to recognize those outstanding people, school employees in our district, okay?
When Gary gets to 25, we should give him a gold watch.
Gary, 25, you'll be at the Capitol Conference that Wednesday, Capitol, now, Capitol Conference is gonna run Sunday through Tuesday, so as of Tuesday.
I figure if you get a gold watch at 25, I will.
I will come back for 25. If you're here at 25, I'll definitely come back here for 25. That's a heck of a milestone, at 25.
Thank you, Reno. Thank you.
Item seven. Treasurer's report. Need a motion.
So move.
Second.
We're wrapping up the year, and just the, on the 5th of May, I received the last homestead and rollback payment from the state, total of $130,800. So that'll finalize all of the real estate taxes for the year. And you'll see in my packet, when we get down a couple more motions, we'll talk about the five-year forecast when we get there. Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Item seven B, approved listed bills for payment.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item seven C, approved and authorized the treasurer to enter an agreement to enroll in the Better Business Bureau of Central Ohio Workers Compensation Group Rating Program managed by, managed by Shakeley, Unit of Service Incorporated for a period of 1-1-2018 to 12-31-2018, annual service fee $650. Motion, please.
So move.
Second. Any comment about that, quick?
Shakeley, they're a third-party administrator for the workers' compensation group. I've worked with them the past couple of years. They do a fantastic job for us. They're in constant communication, they go to any hearings that we would have, and report back appropriately, and they send us monthly reports on where we stand with the workers' compensation, so I would like to keep them, again, for another year.
Okay, item D, approve the enclosed, revised five, oh, excuse me, sorry. Let's vote.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item seven D, approve the revised five-year forecast and its accompanying assumptions for fiscal year 2017 through fiscal year 2021, for submission to the Ohio Department of Education. I am gonna ask for, just to give you a little preview, I'm gonna ask for a board comment regarding the five-year forecast after Vic's presentation. If anybody has any comment about the levy or about where we go from here, I think that would be appropriate time to do that, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna surprise you, so we'll, you can get your thoughts together. Vic, we, I guess we need a motion first, huh?
So move.
Second.
Okay, in regards to the five-year forecast, a couple of items that I want to point out, with the biennial budget not being approved, none of that was taken into any consideration because nothing is final until the end of June, so unfortunately, I'm not able to put any of those numbers anticipated into the forecast. In regards to the carryover balance, just so that everyone is aware, the carryover balance, that seems to be a point of discussion, is the balance ending as of June 30th. But that is not a true balance, that is just what we end up as June 30th, because in the month of July and August, we still have payroll for the accrued wages for the teachers, and we still have all of our incurred liabilities that have taken place prior to June 30th. So although that seems to be the line everybody talks about, that truly is not a true figure because of, there's other, there's outstanding obligations that need to be handled prior to, if the doors would close on June 30th. So I just want to make mention of that. And then also, in my October forecast, I had revenue from new levies on, in section 13.010, and as you can see, I've taken that out due to the fact that the levy has not passed, so, okay.
Okay, does anybody have any questions about the five-year forecast? Anybody want to talk a little bit about that, or about where we go from here in regards to that?
I just had the one thing in regards to, now that we've had two attempts, and where we go from here, I kind of think we need to kind of get back into the work study, or the work sessions, and have, have a day where we could spend several hours just going over, you know, numbers in detail, and that, and status of the district also, not just, just not on the financial side of it, but I just wanted to throw that out there to go back to, you know, put out a public information meeting, I mean, whoever shows, if nobody shows, it's not, and it's not our, it's not our deal, but I was looking at sometime in late summer, before school started, to set something, and then sometime later in the year before the holiday season, like the end of, 1st of August, the end of October is what I would suggest. So just throwing that out there, everybody.
Would anybody have any?
Not a Saturday preferably.
Anybody have any thoughts about having a work session? Everybody okay with that?
You mean the work session, like what we always had before, like the treasurer's report and all?
That, just, just to get an update and to get a better grip on the finances, since, I mean, I, I've said it to several people, I think we're under the microscope, so I think we need to, we need to be better prepared as far as.
And then we have to be more aggressive with going out and selling it, you know, I mean, we can't just grow off the ball and say we don't need it because it's definitely a need, you know, and I don't think that we.
But until that point, you're gonna, you're gonna have to prove that you can run on the, on the money that you have, so.
Right, and it's gonna be hard to get people to come out, too, you know, you gotta get them to come to the meeting, even if, you gotta get a person to go out and pick them up.
If they don't come, I mean, we'll still, I mean, our work session is still gonna continue if there's no input from the public, I mean, that's not, I mean, that's not really what the whole work session is for.
Well, the work session, the work session's a good idea because we can, as our treasurer has said, she's not really going to be able to close the books on this year until August, and that would be a good time to have a work session, so we can actually see what the fund balance is. Because a lot, a lot of people say, well, you got all that money in the bank. Well, yeah, but.
We really don't.
Yeah, we really don't, and. Depending on whether it was to run a school system. And it's all, it's all, we're, we have a negative cash flow, and we're eating into that, and it's, even after being on, we got these awards, and even after being on the board this long, and being a professional at it, it's extremely difficult to understand the whole funding formula, and I shouldn't put an S on the end of that, because of all the different formulas. And for us, who deal with it, and we have a hard time, the treasurer's have a hard time, to expect the general public to understand, is a really big learning curve. So we need to be able to, to have a handle on exactly where we're at, that's not gonna happen till August. Having a work session to get updated is a great idea, and then moving into the next school year, we are all better informed of exactly where we're at, and be able to answer questions, you know, moving forward, so.
And by then, the new budget will have been.
New budget will be finalized, we'll have some really, really good numbers by August. And not that they're gonna be any better, but we'll have good firm numbers.
I just want to say, I'm disappointed in the, in the result, but the, I guess, people spoken. We heard, heard what they had to say, and we're gonna do the best we can. I appreciate TK's idea, I think the work sessions are a great idea. Possibly you could put that on the July agenda, and then we can pick a day that, in July, to do it in August, if that's all right with everybody. If we don't have any other discussion, you want to take a roll call on the, on the motion.
Did you want to say anything?
What?
Did you want to say anything?
I'm sorry. No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item A, establishment of the date of the regular, next regular meeting, Wednesday, June 14th. That's one day off of our usual.
I think we went from the 15th, which was a concern, back to the 14th, it seemed to have worked for everybody, so we'll do it at 5 o'clock on Wednesday.
Okay, everybody good?
Yep.
All right. New business, item nine A. Resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education approved a second and final reading of the following Neola policy, bylaw 157, appointment to the JVS, policy 2430, district sponsored clubs and activities, policy 2430.02, participation of community STEM school students and extracurriculars, policy 2431, under scholastic athletics, policy 2461, reading of, recording of district meetings involving students and their parents, policy 2623, student assessment and academic intervention services, policy 312008, employment of personnel for pro-curricular extracurricular activities, policy 5111, eligibility of resident and non-resident students, policy 5200, attendance, policy 5460, graduation requirements, policy 5610, removal, suspension, expulsion, permanent exclusion of students, policy 563001, positive behavior intervention and supports and limited use of restraint and seclusion, policy 6320, purchases, policy 6325, procurement, federal grant funds, policy 6423, use of credit cards, policy 6680, recognition, policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act, policy 8210, school calendar, policy 8300, continuity of organizational operations plan, policy 8305, information security, policy 8310, public records, policy 8320, personnel files, policy 8330, student records, policy 8452, automated external defibrillators, policy 8500, food services, policy 8510, wellness, policy 9270, equivalent education outside of schools, participation in extracurricular activities for students not enrolled in the district. This is the second reading, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. Any other comment?
Well, you see, New Orleans has been busy. So this is the same policy update that we gave you last month. A lot of things happening with legislation, with graduation requirements, with athletics, with all the different things that we run into involving within the school district. So this is the, the second reading of these policies, and with your approval, we will get them off and get them on our website for our community to see.
Any questions? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item nine B, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education enter an agreement with Omerisa for the tax services for the fiscal year effective July 1st, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Our two biggest purchase services are the ESC and Omerisa. And Omerisa is our IT A site that takes care of all of our internet wants and needs. I will be sitting on the Omerisa Board of Directors next fall to start next school year. Vic has been involved with Omerisa in providing workshops for people to do a great job, and we're lucky to be part of that consortium, and we want to continue that relationship.
They do EMIS, don't they?
They do.
They do EMIS.
That's correct.
Any other questions?
They do a fantastic job with EMIS. We will probably know and have as good a grasp on EMIS, which is sometimes as convoluted as the funding formula, with kids coming and going, we're, we're solid in that area.
Roll call.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item nine C, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education approved first reading of McKinley Elementary and David Anderson Jr., Senior High School Student Handbooks for the 2017-18 school year.
So move.
Sorry. So because of the length of those handbooks, I have emailed you them electronically, instead of printing them out and killing a thousand trees, so the building principals have made their adjustments for next school year. We'll have two readings, a first reading and a second reading, so don't worry, if you didn't get a chance to look at it, you have a chance to look at it before we approve it for a second time, but they've all made all the necessary adjustments based off of the different policies and bylaws that we had to change, so.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item nine D, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education approve the operation of summer school programs at McKinley Elementary and David Anderson Jr., Senior High School according to the enclosed schedules.
So move.
Second.
It is May, so we will be wrapping up our summer school for June for the junior, senior high school, and August for McKinley, and once we get the times and dates in place, then that gives these guys in the back the freedom to go find the instructors who will coordinate the summer schools.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 10E, excuse me, 9E, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education establish the position of part-time seasonal custodian at a rate of pay of $8.50 an hour, and approve the following personnel for work this summer effective May 31st, 2017, Patty Boyd, Valerie Huckman, Brian Dixon, Xander Llewellyn, not to exceed 25 hours per week.
So move. We have traditionally had staff for summer help. These are two ladies that have worked with us before, plus two students who will be able to move things around and get floors waxed and the different classrooms cleaned. Unfortunately, for years, we had a summer program that was funded, and that no longer exists, so we don't have that resource for kids coming to help us do those kind of things in the summer that we've, we've been accustomed to, so we'll have to deal with what we got.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9F, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education approve the enclosed contract with data server for network switch upgrade at a cost of $65,176.45.
So move.
Second.
Vic, you know, I've gotten into discussion about that number, and I know it's sticker shock to some of you, but understand it's 80% deratable. So we're paying $65,176 to upgrade switches to our internet access and capabilities, but 80% of that is rebated back, so the cost of the district is $13,000 and some change. And the current switches are over 10 years old, so we've gotten a good, good usage out of them, it's time to upgrade them and switch out, so that we can continue to access the internet for our instruction.
Any questions? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9G, resolve that the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education issue one-year limited certified contracts effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, to the following personnel, Deborah Glenn, special education, Joni McCullough, chemistry/physics, James Salimis, CBI, James Watt, science online, Amanda Clegghorn, guidance counselor, Lauren Glenn, intervention specialist, Kayla Hiscox, kindergarten, Michael J. Miller, language arts, Scott Miller, music, Carmen Minor, preschool. Have a motion.
So move.
Second.
So the first four are retiree hires, and all of them on the list currently work with us now, so this is no one new to the district. I'll tell you, if you had a chance to go to the band concert, Scott Miller's doing a fantastic job with that band, I tell you, it's as good as I've seen for some time.
As good as ever.
So, yeah, I was pretty happy. So all of these people are currently involved with us. The first four, again, have been, are on a retiree hire, they do still do a great job, and we continue to get great instruction out of them on a daily basis.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Abstain.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9H, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education issue two-year certificated contracts effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2019, to the following personnel, Amanda Smith, kindergarten.
So move.
Second.
Amanda's a great job as well, she fits, she's currently teaching kindergarten for us now, so this is where she falls on the scale.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Abstain.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9I, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education issue three-year certificated contracts effective July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020, to the following personnel, Amy R. Capazulo, math, Kellaharren, nurse, Colleen Van Leyen, library slash media.
So move.
Second.
Again, these are current staff members who have had three-year contracts before, and are still doing a good job for us, we'd like to rehire them for a few years.
Roll call.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9J, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education approve the following projects to include cost and contractors, gymnasium floors resurfacing, Summit Hardwood Flooring Incorporated, high school in Maine, and auxiliary gyms, $3,580.
So move.
Second.
This is the same company we used last year, and add no increase to the situation.
Roll call.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9K, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education authorize the following days of extended time, per diem rate established through the master agreement for the 2016-17 school year. David Brooks, special education coordinator, five days.
So move.
Second.
We've been busy this year in the special education world, so Mr. Brooks needs a few more days to get all caught up with his record keeping, and he has that availability in his contract.
He does a great job.
Yes, he does.
He does a great job. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Burketti?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9L, resolve the Lisbon Exempt Village Board of Education issue athletic supplemental contracts for 2017-18 school year at the negotiated agreement rate of pay, Jim Salimis, excuse me, head varsity football coach, Kelly Dangler, head varsity volleyball coach, Jim Jim Watt, head varsity cross-country coach. Jason Thompson, head varsity golf coach. Lynn Beach, head varsity cheerleading coach. Charles Bell, assistant varsity football coach. Rich Joy, assistant varsity football coach. Dave Rankin, assistant varsity football coach. And Ed Rankin, assistant varsity football coach.
Two more next page.
Oh, excuse me, Kayla Hiscox, assistant varsity volleyball coach. Nicole Monday, junior high cross-country coach.
So move. Second.
My only comment would be, other than cheerleading, these are all coaches that we've had in the past and their wages have been froze because the negotiations, we froze the supplementals this, next coming year because we didn't have any money to give them to increase their pay. So the money that they're making, coaching is the same money that they made this year for next year. They've been frozen until we can get the financial situation straightened out.
Roll call please.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Perketti?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Upstate.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9M, resolve that Lisbon's exempted Village Board of Education approve the following volunteers to assist with supplemental positions within the district. Todd Bremer, volunteer varsity football coach. Mike Buttram, volunteer varsity football coach. Erin Thackler, volunteer cross-country coach, excuse me.
So move. Second.
We've had these volunteers before, there might be more forthcoming. This is who we have right now that would like to help on a volunteer basis. They've all done before and do a nice job with our kids.
Roll call please.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Perketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9N, resolve that Lisbon's exempted Village Board of Education recognize Lisbon Fraternal War of Eagles for their donation toward the Honors and Builders Club trip to Washington, DC. Their donation made it possible for students who otherwise would not have been financially able to participate.
So move. Second.
Stradefield and I got them off right early this morning at 6 o'clock on their trip to DC. It's a soggy, wet Thursday. They're expecting rain most of the time while they're down there, so they're going to have their umbrellas and their ponchos, but again, it goes without saying, the donations from the Eagles and the other community organizations to our kids to allow them to experience trips like this, we surely appreciate it and we just thought it'd be always, as always, great to recognize them.
Did Mrs. Snyder go on this one?
She did not.
Wow.
Mrs. Wallace, they take it over the rains. Mrs. Snyder did it for 20-plus years and the bus was never late. The bus was late today. Mrs. Wallace's first day.
Mrs. Snow boy.
So that was a small snafu, but it was only about 10 minutes late. But he came, you know, when the charter buses don't come and you're sitting out in the rain, it can be somewhat contentious. But Mrs. Wallace, Mrs. Hiscox, Mr. Zek and Mr. Bing, who you don't see here today, is on that Honors and Builders Club trip to.
We talked about that last month.
Washington, DC.
And that's much appreciated by the Eagles and for the staff because that's a wonderful opportunity for kids and I know my kids did enjoy their opportunities, so. Roll call.
Mr. Perketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes. Item 9O, resolve that Lisbon's exempted Village Board of Education enter a contract with Time Warner Cable for 1,000 megabit dedicated connectivity from the Board of Education Office with McKinley Elementary and the Board of Education Office to David Anderson Jr., Senior High School for a three-year period effective July 1st through June 7th, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020, at an annual cost of $17,400. So a motion please.
Second.
So we currently use the Time Warner app, so our internet connectivity comes to this building and then we have to get it to the other two buildings. So we have to use Time Warner's poles to run the fiber to get it to the buildings to allow us to have connectivity to the internet. So it's a three-year commitment, we've used it before. They do a nice job, we have no concerns.
This is also eratable?
It is also deratable at 80% of 17.4, so our cost is.
Less than $3,000.
Less than $3,000.
That's fair because I was doing the math on three years of 17.4.
80% eratable, Mr. Smith.
Okay, item 10, superintendent's report.
Let's vote on that for a minute.
Oh, excuse me. I guess we'll vote on that. They said we have to vote on that. Fancy that, rude. We have to vote on that.
Well, you know. Mr. Hiscox?
Yes.
Mr. Perketti?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yeah, I'll vote on that.
All right, thank you.
Now can we go to superintendent's report?
We can now, yes.
Absolutely. David Anderson, Mr. Stradefield.
All right, and I can only appreciate some athletic colleagues as well and Mr. Bing's excellent, so I'm gladly intrigued giving the athletic updates for the beyond a charter bus. Anyway, last Friday was parade of fashions. I want to publicly thank in front of you guys, Mrs. Brownfield, Mrs. Mungian, rest of junior class parents for putting together the gym for the parade of fashions. If you were able to attend, it was an absolute, it was pretty involved, more so than they did a lot. I wouldn't say they had more decorations necessary than the years past, but the difference was in, of course, knowing that Stradefield, the attention to detail and a lot of it was homemade and this and that. And then there were some things that happened on accident too. For instance, they had two trees because the theme was Four Seasons, so they had fall and spring, the trees with leaves reflecting. And there were the pruning marks on the trees where the branches were cut. I'm like, wow, what happened? Why did they think of that? Well, they couldn't get the trees in the gym, they couldn't get through the doors, so they had to cut them, so, you know.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, and then the problem was a tangier and it was a great time and, you know, I don't know what the junior class parents next year are going to want to do, but the last two years, you know, last year, Gateway Clifford, this year, tangier, putting the kids on charter buses and getting them to and from the dance is one less thing. It isn't a miniature, I have to worry about kids driving and leaving early and are they going to show up and all that, you know, so that really helps the night go. And then, of course, after the problem was scheduled for Shider Point and the weather last week wasn't conducive to going to the main park around Lake Erie, so some phone calls, some favors, and they were able to pull some strings and get a refund from Shider Point in a ten splash of good, you're conservating, the kids having a much better time being in an indoor water park as opposed to roller coasters and the weather. As we mentioned before, Honors and Builders is in Washington this weekend, they'll be returning on Saturday, everything's going smoothly. And then next week on the academic, and next week is senior week, Tuesday will be the Career Center commencement ceremony. Next Wednesday at 7:00 PM is Back Lord, that is at the Christian Church on East Washington this year, that's the host church. Senior breakfast and graduation practice will be on Thursday and then Friday, the 19th. A week from tomorrow is Senior Day. Hard to believe. And of course, the last day for our classmen is Wednesday, the 24th. So we are, we're not winding down anymore, we are at the end, so. But overall, it's been special for the senior class, it's been a very fast year, it's been a very smooth year in terms of their academic achievements and them doing what they need to be doing in the classroom to see themselves get across the stage, so that's been one good thing. Athletically, baseball team played their final regular season game at Kent State Monday night, which was out of the ordinary. We were the host school, we played McDonald. Because we were the host school, that meant that Mr. Bing got to be the official announcer and I got to run the scoreboard, so we were learning on the fly real quick and, but it was good that the team won, it was just a great night overall. I know that the coaches and the boosters are already talking to Mr. Bing about doing something similar next year, whether it be at Kent or another venue that allows to do that. So softball team won the sectional championship on Tuesday night, so they play again in the district semis Monday night at Western Reserve versus St. Thomas Saquon's, who they beat last year in the district finals. So it's a rematch of the district final and the district semis this year. And baseball was supposed to have their sectional championship tonight against Southern, that was washed out, that's at home because we're the higher seed, and so that will be replayed tomorrow at 4:30, again on our home field, and if we win, then we will advance to the district semis at Seane Park, I believe, next Wednesday, so that's where we're at in Florida.
Questions from Stradefield? Mr. Kamets, Camp Conicwee in fifth grade.
Thank you, Mr. Sifki. Yes, fifth grade camp. We have a number of fifth grade activities in the month of May every year as they wind up their time at McKinley and get ready to go to David Anderson next school year. Camp being one of those highlights, three days at camp that we had taken some great high school counselors. Five boys, six girls went with us Monday along with some staff down at McKinley, along with two busloads of fifth grade students. And in this day and age of social media, there were even, as the students were at camp, video floating around of some of the students dancing and so forth, having a good time at camp, so.
So I've seen.
I heard, I heard.
So I've seen.
But they did have a great trip. Everybody was back 2:00 on Wednesday and got home and then back to school today for another field trip. They went to Highlandtown today, same group of kids, fifth grader, so we do have a number of field trips taking place this month as well. But they did go to Highlandtown today, we've got a fifth grade science fair next week, they do a fifth grade talent show the last week of the year, so we're jam-packed with fifth grade activities since we wrapped up our state testing and we've gotten into the last two and a half weeks of school year, a lot of activities going on. First grade's taking a field trip, second grade's one field trip, kindergarten's one and two field trips next. And these are all places that they can drive to, pretty locals, a couple of annual farms, wagon trails is one, we sent a group to, we sent a group down to Beaver Creek. I mentioned fifth grade going to Highlandtown today. It's nice to have areas like that local to us that we can send these groups of kids to and get a different experience than they have in the classroom. We started off the month with our kindergarten screening, we've got a good crop of kindergarters already excited to go. You're going to see some signs around town that say, well, home of a future Blue Devil that these kindergarten students are sticking in their yards. If you drive around, you'll see some of those currently, but we still have those numbers coming in, still have kindergarten students enrolling as well as in our preschool, which brings me to preschool graduation. Don't think that David Anderson is the only graduation going on this month. Preschool graduation is taking place at McKinley on the 22nd. And if you've ever seen preschoolers dressed up in caps and gown and want to cross the stage, that's something to see. That'll take place on the 22nd. But then the other big, big, big thing going on this month and all month is our Relay for Life events. A lot of different events going on at McKinley throughout this week, last week, next week,